All right, everyone, if we could start the meeting. Clerk, are you ready? I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order at 6:05 PM. I want to thank everyone for attending. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner. Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'd like to call off Pastor Portland Stokes to offer a word of prayer.
Good evening. Our God and Father, we thank you tonight for your makes and power, your love and care and concern for us. We thank you tonight for your goodness. We thank you tonight for your mercy. Lord, we give you praise, and we ask you to forgive us for the times when we may seem ungrateful and don't operate with thanksgiving in our heart, but tonight, we do come to say thank you, Lord. We thank you for these leaders, these department heads. We thank you for this mayor tonight, God, and we ask that you would breathe on us tonight and allow this meeting to function and be proper in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we also have joining us our department heads. We have Cheryl, Director Cheryl Tillman from Inspection Services. Don Alessi, our Director of Community Economic Development. Richard Chambers, our co-director. We have Val Williams. We have our Deputy Commissioners in the back, Bobby Jericho, Jay Embry, and then also our Police Chief, Kevin Colasch, and also our Fire Chief, Glenn Bacher. Thank you, guys, for attending tonight. At this time, is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda? Not the next item is approval of minutes. You have minutes before you. Has everyone had opportunity to review the minutes? If so, can someone make a motion to approve the minutes as stated on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams. Roll call.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Madam Williams? Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. Next item are reports of standing committees. We'll start the Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
No report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and licenses, Alderman Smith.
No report this morning.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderwoman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams, Public Safety.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gardner, if he comes, we'll see if he has a report. City Council Reports. We'll start on this side, Alderman Smith.
I just want to basically apologize to the residents who may have attended the this past weekend's monthly Town Hall meeting. Unfortunately, I was at an IML conference. We will continue our monthly meetings on the third Saturday of October. So, any questions, feel free to give my office a call, (708) 891-8197. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton, City Council Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item tonight. I'm in receipt of all of the calls and emails, and I think I've responded to all of them at this point and directed the appropriate issues to the appropriate departments. So, if anybody that's reached out already, if you have not gotten a resolution to the matter you've reached out about, please let me know. And anybody else, please continue to direct your issues, concerns, calls to (708) 891-8196.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams, City Council Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we know that God makes all things possible. Just want to remind the residents about the 3rd and 4th Ward meeting scheduled for October 3rd, Monday, October 3rd, at Downey Park, 6:30 PM, starting promptly. So, please be on time. And that's the first Monday of October, October 3rd, 6:30 PM, at Downey Park. That's 300 Jeffrey Avenue. Thank you, Mayor. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman, do you want to introduce your guest today?
Yes, I have a student here from, where are you, Thornwood?
Monster.
Monster High School, who came in to take some pictures and observe our City Council meeting for a, what kind of class is it for?
Government.
A government class, so he may be interested in public service. So, let's set an example, so that he don't get jaded to a different profession. Hopefully, he can someday become the mayor of his prospective city, or Alderman, or trustee, or whatever that may be. So, let's welcome him and operate in good spirits, so that he has a good impression before he leaves this evening. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Now I'm going to cause all kinds of trouble tonight.
I just want the 3rd Ward residents to look out for a mailing that is outlining the fall and winter schedule of events. So, just look out for that, and I'll see you all at the 3rd and 4th Ward Town Hall meeting October 3rd. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. For the record, Alderman Gardner, it's at 6:11 PM. Alderman, we'll come back to you for the reports. 2nd Ward, Alderwoman Wilson?
Thank you. Reminder that October 5th of this year is our October 2nd Ward meeting. It is the first Wednesday of every month, 6:30 PM, at the Safety Training Center, 24th State Street. Thank you for the residents who have called and emailed regarding large dogs on the loose. The city is aware of it. Our police department is aware of it. Our animal control is aware of it. We are also making the resident who owns the dogs aware of it. If you own a pet, please secure your pets. We do not want to run from your dog. Please visit alderwomanwilson.com. It will be updated this week with all of the October happenings. The October outing, which my seniors would like a masquerade ball for Halloween, and our annual trunk-or-treat. So, that's alderwomanwilson.com. Should you need me, please call me (708) 586-4990. That's (708) 586-4990. Or feel free to email me at mwilson@calumetcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, want to thank School District 155 Superintendent Josato and the school board for the invitation to yesterday's Back to School Bash at Wentworth Intermediate School. It was a great event. A lot of folks showed up, got to talk to a lot of residents. So, thank you again for that invitation. I also want to thank CMAP for being on hand and collecting survey information from residents. They had a great turnout there, too, as well, so able to get a lot of feedback in preparation for some stormwater management planning and some recommendations that'll be coming from CMAP. So, thank you to CMAP. And also, just a quick update on the Burnham Avenue reservicing project. The first layer binder is down. They are hoping to put that final layer sometime at the end of the month, early October, and wrap that up. So, thank you again for everyone for their patience, and thank you to Farnsworth Group for keeping us updated, our city engineers. We look forward to that project coming to a close. And just some good news here, we did get, I did announce that we did get an award from the DCEO. It was a $700,000 Revitalized Downtown grant. Again, Farnsworth Group did a great job in putting together that exhibit for us to get awarded that. We did receive the award letter, I believe, today or yesterday, Mayor, if I'm not mistaken. So, that's exciting news, so we could start to plan for how to use $800,000 or so to continue to implement the recommendations for the Burnham Avenue corridor. So, that's all I had this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner, City Council Report and Committee Reports. You want to do them all?
Yeah, I can do them all together. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to do my Finance Committee Report first. On tonight's agenda before the council is a bond ordinance not to exceed $25 million. You should have all received Todd Kraskowski's analysis of how the bond money is anticipated to be spent. The largest expenditure in this bond measure is $10 million for the citywide sewer project. It is anticipated for cleaning, televising, data, engineering, and loan applications. Once this work is completed, the engineers will apply for a low-interest loan. Also in this bond is the levy project between Lansing and Calumet City, anticipating on spending $3 million. That $3 million is going to assist with acquisitions of easements on those said properties along the Calumet City, on the Calumet City side. Also, Technology Fund, we're looking at spending $1 million. That's going to be set aside for prior proceeds to assist with the cost of citywide system upgrades. The second largest portion of the bond is the $5.4 million that is going towards the refunding of the 2015 B-bond. This is all I have right now. Also, oh, one quick thing, $1.4 million in the issuance cost is also associated with this measure. And last but not least, NHS has partnered with Calumet City in an effort to assist seniors with home repairs to their houses up to $5,000. That's all I have for the community report. Now, for my 5th Ward Report. All of the residents, those of you that have been calling my office, please continue to call my office with any issues, concerns, (708) 891-8195. This week, my office met with CMAP regarding the planning and land usage and all of the good stuff over there in the potential four-site village project and proposed planning events with those, I'm lost for words right now, with that proposed project. If you guys have any other questions, please feel free. I want to congratulate the Public Works. Thank you, guys, for quick services to the citizens regarding trash, overgrown vegetation throughout the board. I want to thank you, guys, for prompt response. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Next item on the agenda, informational items, 8A through D. 8A is a proclamation proclaiming Polish heredigma. So, we want to thank the Treasurer for submitting that, and just remind everyone, the Treasurer at the next meeting will announce any events in October. So, we want to thank again the Treasurer for that. Is there a motion to accept informational items 8A through D and place them on file? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
All in.
Opposed? Informational items are accepted and placed on file. New business item, number 9, 9A, 1 through 9. Are there any questions? Item 4 is what Alderman Gardner mentioned, the intergovernment agreement with the Village of Lansing, just to provide direction on that. So, this is a good project for the city of Calumet City. Are there any questions regarding 9A, 1 through 9?
Mayor, I had a question on item 7. Thank you for the help with connecting with Farnsworth Group. I was able to have a conversation with Matt from Farnsworth Group regarding item 7. In our conversations, and I could be wrong, and Ken, if you can clarify, or Mayor, but was it a request or proposal for possible development at the Sears site, a request or proposal for construction of a water resort, as so written here in our, I was under the impression that we were just advertising the site for potential development?
Well, I believe, Mr. Mayor, this is coming from the council and from your office and not through us. So, we were, again, we take our direction, this is a policy matter, we take our direction from the City Council and the Mayor.
So, Alderman, the economic development items have been removed from the bond, so the City Council can have more time to consider all of the economic development projects in order to make an informed decision about a potential water resort. The bondholders and on our bond call, it was suggested that we do a RFP, so we know exactly what will be built, the specs, the requirements, if the city chooses to go forward with the water resort for that location.
So, are we asking Farnsworth Group to design a water park and have those specifications listed in an RFP?
No.
That's not what I.
No. We're asking them to.
To assist the Budget Director in being able to vet the proposals, craft the proposal, and be able to make sure that it goes out in a proper means. And we, again, serve at the direction of the council and the Mayor as to what it should be in that proposal. But we're just there to help the Budget Director.
Mayor, would you be interested in, I mean, do we have to, like, limit it to a water resort, or could we just be open to any development, like, for example, a water park? Or are we just looking for water park-specific projects?
Alderman, if you have any other project, you can put a motion on the next agenda, but this.
Well, no, if a developer has, you know, an idea there, and we're pigeonholing it to a water park, I guess they're not going to want to submit a proposal, I guess. So, it kind of would give us more options, I guess. We could certainly leave, for example, a water park or a water resort.
Alderman, if you just, if you want to make a motion to amend it to include any other project, do that.
Yeah, just a development for the site, yeah.
Just, so, item 7, the motion would be amended to include any other development project as well. That would be the motion. Is there a second to amend item?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete, second by Alderwoman Wilson. Just for clarification purposes, item number 7 will be to direct the city engineer, city finance director, and city bond council to prepare a request or proposal for construction of a water resort and any other development at the Sears location and submit it to the City Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. So, items 9A, 1 through 9, is there a motion to approve items 9A, 1 through 9?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, roll call?
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson? Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes for 9A, 1 through 9. Next item are building permits. We have new fence construction. Is there a motion for, does anyone have any questions regarding the fence construction? If not, is there a motion to approve new fence construction for the item stated on the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. Roll call?
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner? Patton?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Yes. Item 3, under asbestos abatement emergency. This is concerning 408 Garfield. I presented to the City Council the emergency order issued by my office to tear this property down because it was a public health crisis, an emergency. We intend to do the same with properties that, in Calumet City, that look the same. So, this is that emergency motion. The property has been torn down, and the city attorneys are in the process of getting the property for the city. So, this is that motion, 408 Garfield.
On behalf of the 1st Ward, just want to say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
For that work.
Yes. Alderman, I will send it to you to make the motion for this item.
So moved, yes.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete, second by Alderwoman Wilson. Roll call?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
It's coming, Alderman. It's coming, Alderman. I know what you.
Patton? Yes.
Patton?
Yes. Smith?
Yes. Yes.
It's coming, Alderman. Next items are resolutions and ordinances. We have two ordinances. Has everyone had the opportunity to review? Alderman Gardner, if so, can you make the motion?
One resolution, I'm sorry, and one ordinance.
Motion for discussion. So moved.
Can we, can we open number 2 to the discussion?
Let's, motion made by Alderman Gardner, second, who made the second?
Was it Wilson for discussion?
Yeah. Alderwoman Wilson for discussion. Alderman?
So, my concern is the, and I did thank you, Casparic, for a very detailed covering of this, but I think myself, as well as some of my colleagues, had a question for the engineer. What is the immediate need for the $10 million? Is that something that we could wait on? Only because when we talk about, there's going to be a tax levy, which increases the property tax. And I'm, I really don't want to put that burden on our residents.
Sure. Well, I think that's an important point, is that how would we pay back the $10 million to investigate, research, catalog the information on the sewer system, which most of it is combined sewers, as you know? And we have a water and sewer fund. So, it doesn't necessarily have to go on the taxpayers' and property taxes. It can be financed through the water and sewer fund, through the users of the sewer system. So, that would be our first response. But it is important, I think, and as Chairman Gardner pointed out, that we've talked for over a year on the need for us to have information about the sewer system. What we do know is that we believe, based on the anecdotal information we've gotten from our major vendor, Calumet City Plumbing, as well as from Jay and the Public Works crews, is that about 30% of the sewers are working efficiently. So, that impacts directly on two things. One being stormwater, right? Because we're collecting all this stormwater, mixing in with sanitary sewage, and we're getting these backups and street flooding. So, the only way we can collect that is by making these sewers work effectively. Number 2 is that our streets are impacted by what's underground. So, as Chairman Gardner notes, we have a number of streets in our older part of the community, the 1st, 2nd, 5th wards, where the streets are starting to collapse because of these collapsing sewers. So, the big problem for the city that we've identified in the last year is that we simply do not have good information on the sewer system. So, what we want to do is collect this information, catalog it, analyze it, and then transfer that into some very low-interest loans, the best way to finance this, through the state that's guaranteed by the federal government, that can be paid back over 30 to 40 years, and then we can pay those back, those loans back, through the water and sewer fund. That's the main way. So, I think it's important that we do this. We don't have to do, catalog the whole city, but if we want to know where these problems are, and we want to be able to fix our streets, we've got to identify where those problems are, and we need to get at it quickly. Because we know that the quality of life is impacted by this street flooding, the backup sewers, the backed-up basement flooding. So, that's what we recommend, is that really getting this information, so we can leverage into the amount of financing that the federal government is wanting Calumet City to take.
And my second is just to get clarification, Mayor. You stated that the economic development projects will not be in this bond?
No, they're not. Every project that comes for the city that's in the bond, the city has to approve. So, our goal is to get development agreements for each project. We're still working through the economic development projects, because we want to make sure that the city's going to get its money back. So, if we do, if we give $5 million to Yellow Banana, if we give $5 million to a potential store, then that store has to pay the city back. If we give $12 million to a water resort, they have to give us the money back and show us how they're going to give us the money back, and have a schedule of how they're going to pay that money back. You made a statement that this is going on the tax rolls. This is not going on the tax rolls, because in meeting after meeting, we've stated that we're not only going to use our water fund, as Ken just said, we're also going to get loans that we told the City Council about, that $20 million low-interest loan that's forgivable, that the city is going to apply for as well.
So, can we remove and levy a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest of the bonds from this verbiage?
Alderman, the bond council and attorneys wrote this language. I would not suggest removing that.
That's why I asked about increasing, because of this language. It says levy a tax.
That language has to be in there, because the city.
That's a safeguard.
It's a safeguard.
It's a safeguard for the bondholders. It's not anticipated to hit the real estate tax rolls, everything remaining constant. However, the assurance, the full assurance of the city of Calumet City has to fall behind the issuance of these bonds, and part of that full assurance is, if all things, if all else fails, we will pay for this through real estate tax.
So, if I may ask, as a taxpayer, what insurance do I have that four years from now, or three years from now, you don't hit me with a levy?
Well, Alderman, the alternative is that we have bad streets, we have bad roads. So, if you want to go on and have bad streets and bad roads, and continue the stuff that we've been putting off for the last 10 to 20 years, vote against this. But this is good for our taxpayers, because we have to, we're going to get money from our state government, we're going to apply for money through our federal government. This is good for our taxpayers, where we have a solution to a problem, not continue to exacerbate bad streets and bad roads.
And I understand that, and I'm sure you understand, that as we represent our constituents, especially me in the 2nd Ward, we have people that are paying $13,000 to $17,000 in property taxes. So, to hear just even a couple hundred dollars being assessed, it makes people fearful and want to move.
That's not happening, Alderman. Mr. Treasurer?
It is happening. I have for-sale signs that go up every day.
If you listen to what the city engineer said, we have to go out and bond for this project. It's a necessary project. However, we're going to apply for low-interest loans to repay this portion of the bond from the federal government, which the bond has one amortization schedule, which is shorter than the 35 or 40-year low-interest bond term that we would be applying for. So, in other words, we'd be stretching the dollar amount over a longer period of time, which brings the annual dollar amount down. So, we anticipate with the revenues that we garner through the sewer fund, through the sewer user fund, that we should be able to take care of this.
Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. The first one is just for clarification. I want to make sure I remember this correctly. I think every December, we pass our tax levy for the following year. And prior to that, we have to post it for so many days publicly before we actually pass the tax levy. So, that's the only time throughout the year that we can actually impact what the tax levy is going to be for the following year, correct? So, something like this is not necessarily saying we're going to raise real estate taxes or we're not going to raise real estate taxes. That's a decision that's made in December in consultation with our whole financial team.
Yes. If I may, Mayor, we neglected to, within the projects that are listed, there's also a refunding involved. So, we're going to take the 2015 bond, refund it, and hopefully.
Assuming we get the right interest rates. Assuming we get the right interest rates.
Do what it's been doing as of late, garner some profits from that, and then put that back into the system.
And I can say this to Alderman Wilson, part of this too is that we have to take advantage now of the interest rates. And this is not, you know, and Mr. Treasurer can explain the process of, if we do it now, the proceeds of this comes back to the City Council within 30 to 60 days. But we also have $2.7 million in there for public works equipment. That's part of the bond as well, to buy that equipment that we have not bought in probably 10 years or more, that came through Alderman Navarrete's committee. So all the items in the bond we've discussed, just making sure that we get the proceeds before, and then John will use some of that to finance projects, but this is projects that we've talked about in the city for a while.
Good.
Alderman Patton?
Sorry. Yeah, I think just to piggyback off of that, you know, taking advantage right now, the interest rates keep going up. I think the Fed raised the rates again yesterday. I heard today that they're looking at raising it next month, another 75 basis points, and another 75 basis points the month after that. You know, so, you know, obviously the sooner the better on this. But just again, for another clarification, the ordinance says not to exceed $25 million. So if the council decides, we're not going to do this project, or we're going to put this project on hold, or we're going to pay for this out of here, we're not, this is not going out to bond for 25. That's the maximum. We can always go out and take less, right?
We could, but according to John and Todd Kreskowski, there's a lot of flexibility in what the City Council, so if the City Council, if we go out for 25 million and say, for example, a Ken project comes in at 8.7 million, the City Council can decide with that other 1.3 million to do more streets or more sidewalks or do more programs. But the suggested amount was 25 million because it gives us the flexibility for that.
Okay, thank you.
A point, Mayor, if I may, a point that the Alderman brings up, these projects are not going to be let, and the monies aren't going to be spent immediately, which, you know, given the interest rates, we'll be holding this money and paying as we need it, and we'll be earning interest on it during the time that we still hold it.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Wilson?
Since everything comes before us first, yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. Would the council like to, we have two executive session matters, would the council like to finish the agenda and then go into executive session? Yes. What are the executive session matters? You guys don't have to say it that quick. Hold on, Mayor. What are the matters? See where it's going. All right, I got you. All right, calm down, calm down. Mr. Treasurer, you had one point of clarification?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove one item off of the bill list. This is located on page three of the bill list. It's PO number 231-537-01, an amount of $2,379.75. And I'd like to remove this verbiage.
Please, we keep it out.
231-537-01 is the number of PO, and PO is in the amount of $2,379.75, which would...
Number three?
I'm patient. Which would bring the new invoices, the new invoice total would now be $1,346,913.26. And the grand total of the bill listing, including motions and overbills, would be in the amount of $4,779,114,25.
So that's for number 34. On the agenda or is this on the bill list?
The PO is on the bill list.
All right. Okay.
Just wanted to review that verbiage.
Okay.
Could we go into executive session first?
There are financial matters.
Yeah, the financial matters are related to executive session, then we have to go to executive session first.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of litigation, employment matters?
Can include financial management.
Potential litigation. Potential litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session for stated reasons, 6:40 PM? So moved. Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Wilson. Will be in executive session, everyone, at 6:40 PM. We'll come back and conduct business. Thank you. Is there a motion to return to regular order of business at 6:56 PM? So moved. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor? Aye. We are back in regular order of business. We're under financial matters. D1 through 34, with the correction from the Treasurer. Alderman Gardner, if you can make a motion for the financial matters, please. So moved. Motion to approve D financial, D1 through 34. As so amended. Seconded by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Unfinished business, Alderman Navarrete, we'll start on this side.
It's not really unfinished business. I just want to, was there anyone from IT that could explain that we just approved it? I know we're excited to get the upgraded audiovisual here in the council chambers, but was there anyone that could, if not, I could follow up with them tomorrow, but...
We have the gentleman from the audiovisual company here. If you want him to explain, Alderman, oh, IT, Jewel.
Oh, if he could, yeah, just what the difference was and the packages that...
Could you please step forward? Scope of work.
Thank you, good evening. So the major difference in the package was...
Sorry, can you introduce yourself, your company, and to the Alderman?
Yes, sorry about that. My name is Dalot Sayfalaw. The company is Bright Star Digital. And we're doing, the proposal before you represents an upgrade over the originally approved proposal. The key differences are we added some, the mayor added some enhancements for it. So instead of having two screens, or one screen, now there are going to be two screens. So one will be able to face the audience and the constituents, the other will be able to face you guys. So if someone was doing a presentation, you could see, and all of the people in the gal we could see as well. The other key upgrade is that the system now has a control package so that you don't have to, you know, have an engineer to be able to get the meetings up and going. You can simply press a button that says council meeting, and then all the mics come up, all the speakers turn on, you can press another button, presentation, and the screens will come on. So it has some control upgrades as well. And then lastly, we changed the speaker layout. So instead of the speakers being in the ceiling, so all the sounds, like, sound is coming from above, speakers will actually be on the pillars. So there'll be a speaker in the left and a right, two speakers on each of these pillars, and then we'll upgrade the speakers in the rear. So it gets rid of the echo effect that you kind of have a little bit of now, and then it allows all the sound to arrive uniformly to everyone's ear at the same time. So that's a core.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So no lazy boys then. We're not, no new chairs, no...
That's coming, Alderman. That's coming.
No, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Just upcoming, and you would have to do apologize, check the website, but TF North, TF North's homecoming is coming up, as well as, and I believe that's next week. And then October 2nd is the Chargers Youth Football's homecoming, and that's October 2nd at TF North. I would also like to thank Whitmore Intermediate for a fantastic evening last night. Thank the FOP for a fantastic and successful golf outing yesterday. If you need me, please, again, feel free to call me or text me. Continue to send me pictures of things that need to be repaired, 708-586-4990. This is also a reminder that my lists for next year, they are open. If you need sidewalk repair, please email me. If you would like your alleys graded, please email me. You can stop emailing me for speed bumps because those are coming up in a matter of weeks. So we just have to do our due diligence to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you. Go back to Alderman Navarrete for the event to mention.
I forgot.
Alderman Tillman, unfinished?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Williams, unfinished?
Just real quickly, residents, please, don't hesitate to call with the concerns and issues that you maybe need to get addressed. The number is 708-891-8194, or you can call or text 708-212-2240. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gardner?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you may remember, a few years ago, the Archdiocese of Chicago came in and consolidated the three Catholic churches into one parish here in Calumet City and closed St. Victor Church, which effectively ended the every summer event of Victor Fest. Last year, the new parish, Jesus Shepherd of Souls, held their first annual festival at Our Lady of Knock Church. They're going to be holding their second annual on Saturday, October 1st, 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There will be food, drinks, entertainment. So come on out, that's at Our Lady of Knock Church, Saturday, October 1st, from 1:00 PM till 11:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Yes, thank you. Just want to remind the sub-board residents about the October meeting, which will be held at 24 State Street at 10:00 AM to noon on that date. If you have any questions, please contact the office at 708-891-8197, or email asmith@calumetcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. There being no further business to come before the City Council, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:02 PM? So moved. Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams this time. To adjourn, all in favor? All right. All opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:03 PM. Thank you, Alderman.